Are there any questions, commissioners, about any items on the agenda for the briefing or any other items that you'd like to add to the agenda for discussion after we get through the items that are printed? All right, great. Well, let's get started. The first item on the agenda, hey, Robert, is Strategic Partnership Grant Committee update, and Rachel Nygaard is going to help us out with this.
Good afternoon, commissioners.
Good afternoon.
My name is Rachel Nygaard, and I'm the Strategic Partnerships Director here for Buncombe County. And I will have the pleasure today of introducing our topic and getting us started, and then passing to members of our Strategic Partnership Grant Committee, who will carry the most of the presentation for you. So with us today, we have Doug Clark, Paul Tax, Kate Berger, and Rebecca Streimer, who will come up at various places within the presentation. As you recall, the Strategic Partnership Grant is one of our broadest use grants that we have here at Buncombe County. It funds a mix of nonprofit organizations and projects that are working on programs across the strategic plan areas of education, environment, economy, and well-being. And these are annual grants that come from Buncombe County General Funds. And I will remind you, although I know you don't need a reminder, this is the grant pool that was, up until this most recent cycle, directly administered by the Board of Commissioners. So applications would come in, and the board itself would review and make recommendations and determinations about which grants to give, to which organizations and projects, at which levels. And this being our first cycle of the new structure with a committee reviewing and making recommendations to the board, there was a request to hear from that committee about how it went, what went well, and what's up next for that group's work. So here's the list of the committee members. As you recall, the committee was initially formed by a vote of this Board of Commissioners late last year, late 2019. We took applications. Twenty-one applicants were interviewed by the Board of Commissioners, and you selected and then appointed, or seated nine people into the committee, three per Commissioner District. And these members took office into their committee roles in January and got busy heading straight into the grant-making process. So I will now pass to Douglas Clark, who is the Chair of the Strategic Partnership Committee. He'll present, and then we'll hear from Paul Tax, and then Kate Berger and Rebecca Streimer will wrap us up at the end. Thank you. I may just hold this in advance, the slides for you while you present, if you want.
Okay.
I am Doug Clark, Chairman of the Strategic Partnership Grant Committee. I'm afraid I was only elected by default because no one else really wanted the job.[225.12][225.12](Laughter). I'm going to give you some brief highlights of our committee's work. On behalf of the Strategic Partnership Initiative Committee, we really want to thank the Buncombe County Commissioners for this opportunity to serve the Buncombe County community by allocating funds to deserving area nonprofits. I believe we were all humbled by the pressing needs which exist in our community, and we were made aware of the workload which the Commissioners have to deal with on a regular basis. First of all, we would like to express a deep gratitude to the county staff who guided us through this inaugural process. Rachel Nygaard, Angela Johnson, and Kevin Burnett capably and patiently steered the committee's work. They are really firstly great. Many, many thanks to them. Although the committee certainly had differences of opinion, we were able, by consensus, to work well as a team. Without a clear roadmap to really guide us, we created a deliberative and intentional decision-making process. The committee was very inclusive of all members while giving merit to very diverse ideas. Hopefully, this will help future committees in their work. All of this, of course, was accomplished during the COVID pandemic. The committee and the county staff deserve some credit for being very flexible during this time. Not being a tech-savvy person myself, I was fortunate to have my two daughters and my niece move back home with me in the spring, and they most long-sufferingly really helped me to navigate the virtual world. I don't think I would have been able to participate otherwise, so thanks to them, too. Our committee was able to support a diversity of projects across the spectrum of the educated and capable community, the environment and energy stewardship, resident well-being, and the vibrant economy. As I am sure you are very familiar with, we were faced with the daunting prospect of $2.5 million in requests with roughly $890,000 to allocate. Guided by a well-developed scoring platform for evaluating applicants, this great group of county citizens, by consensus, was able to fund 34 projects run by 32 agencies, and 47% of the projects were funded for the first time. I believe we will all have more sympathy with the county Commissioners now, as I'm sure your budget requests vastly exceed your budget. At this point, I'm going to turn our presentation over to the other committee members here today. Paul Tax, Rebecca Streimer, and Vice Chairman Kate Berger are going to speak about some of the problems we ran into, ideas we have come up with for the future, and some questions we have for the Commissioners. Thank you all for this opportunity to serve. I believe Paul will speak next.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. And whether wittingly or unwittingly, my co-committee members have chosen me with the last name of Tax to run you through the numbers. So, we will do that. As the slide indicates, next slide, there it is. You allocated to this grant program, and to our discretion, making recommendations on $889,305 of County General Funds. You will see we had total requests which tripled that amount, and I think the total number of applications received, and which we vigorously reviewed as a committee, was 55. So I echo what Douglas said before me, to reiterate our appreciation for the county staff, and also for a very sharp county grants software platform. Made our job possible. Without that, it would have been much, much more difficult. Of the 55 applications you see, we funded 34 by 32 sponsoring nonprofit agencies. 47% of the 34 funded were new projects, so they had not received this type of funding in the prior county year. And we very much appreciate the vote of support that our recommendations were also approved then for funding by the Board of County Commissioners within the June, within June 2020 timeframe and the fiscal year 21 budget. The range of grants awarded ran from $2,000 up to $92,000, and the average grant was And we had, as you can see in this slide, a very healthy spread across the four focus areas that you had identified as being the county's priorities. So in educated and capable community, we had 11 projects funded, a total of 34% of the total funds allocation, $305,617. And Rachel, on the next slide, you'll see the agencies who were awarded county funds for educated and capable community. The next focus area is environmental and energy stewardship. There were four projects funded, a total of $81,740 and 9% of the total funds to be allocated, and you see the listing of agencies there.
So can I ask a quick question?
Please.
And if you're not prepared for it, then maybe Rachel can get it later, but was there less people applying for grants within this category here?
Yes, yes, there were. And I do have a listing of detail. We could get you those figures. Probably would not be that difficult, but...
No, I would just, you know, I would just encourage, you know, to maybe reach out because a couple of areas, you know, pop in my mind that, you know, that might, if they knew a little bit more about it, they might apply, and then, and based on what y'all, you know, did in this cycle, y'all might, you know, fund some of it, and it might be the best thing for the county to do that. But anyhow, I was just questioning why we didn't have as many, and just putting food for thought out there that, you know, maybe we can educate that, put some more information out about that.
I would say, Commissioner Belcher, my recall is we did have fewer applicants in that category, and also a lesser request for dollars, so...
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, thank you for your feedback. The third focus area is resident well-being, and in that area, we funded 14 projects, a total of $374,448 and 42% of our funds. And then the last focus area is vibrant economy, which of course takes on very new meaning when you have a pandemic-related economic shutdown. We funded five projects in that area, $127,500 and 14% of our funds. And I will close before I turn it over to my partners on the committee with a couple notes. One is that on this slide, anyone who is here in the room today or who may be viewing in this moment or at any point in the future, all of the funding awards are posted very transparently on the website buncomcounty.org/grants, so you can see the results of our recommendations and of your awards. And then finally, from a fiscal standpoint and closing on the theme of strategic partnership grants, I want you to know that the $889,000 in county funds represented about 16% of the total project budgets for the awarded grantees. So one county dollar along with five other dollars. And the 34, excuse me, applicants who came, who were awarded in their applications as they first presented them, had already identified close to $1 million of funded commitments from either other private sources or, in some cases, other benefactors. So there truly is a fiscal partnership, and again, thank you for the honor to participate, and I appreciate your support of the program.
All right, thank you.
I'm Rebecca Streimer, and my partner on the committee, Kate Berger, we're going to go back and forth through the next slides, through the final wrap-up slides that we hope spark maybe some conversation, either while we're presenting or afterwards. After the grant-making decisions were made, our committee came together for a bit of a postmortem session, a debrief, coming together to talk and share and listen. And we came out of that with sort of two categories of thoughts, the first being highlights, things we're pretty proud of, and we want you to know about it. And then also some areas that we're calling recommendations, but that as a committee, we really found them to be the areas we can't wait to dig more into in our work together for the rest of the year. So you can see here the highlights that we saw. I'm going to walk you through the first few, and we were just outside together remarking on this one in particular, that the four of us felt like being on this committee was something different than anything we'd experienced before in that there was so much listening, there was so much considering of other opinions, and there was a wide diversity of opinions amongst us. You made wise selections, I think, at times. Not that it was difficult. In fact, it was the opposite of difficult. We worked really, really hard, and I think the way we worked together makes me very proud. We built a bicycle while we were riding it, which we're also all very proud of. We worked, Doug made reference to this earlier. We were making the rules as we were going. We had directives that were very, very helpful, but we had a lot of latitude to figure out how to do this. And we, every single member of the committee took it seriously, and we feel we've created a very deliberate and intentional process that we're focused on the replicability of it as we move forward, so that there is predictability in how these grants come down. The application gave us really sound, excellent, wide-ranging information on each group that came in, and we were, as a group, very, very impressed by the breadth of applicants that we got. Although, Commissioner Belcher, I appreciate that you've already brought up, there are areas where we have over-representation, and we'd like to think about how to broaden that. I'm going to turn it over to Kate now.
Hello. I'd like to finish out the items on this slide by reiterating that the county staff was integral into our ability to reach our objectives, and it's due to their time, their effort, and their professionalism that we were able to hit the recommendation deadline. If left to our own devices, the virtual meetings would have been a bit of a mess, and so we wouldn't have been able to provide such transparency to the public during those meetings. They really walked us through and supported us every step, and we really appreciate that. One topic of discussion that we have put out there for future meetings is how better to support the grantees through this process. We recognize that there is a platform, a structure, set in place to provide information and accountability, and we wanted to open up in the committee opportunities to provide additional support, additional technical support perhaps. We're not sure what that looks like yet. This is sort of the very beginning stages of what we would like to help build in to make the grantees as successful as possible in this process.
I'm going to dig into these last couple bullets in particular, recognizing that that broad, diverse range of applicants made for a broad, diverse range of awardees. And as a committee, we are certainly interested in considering what tools we'll have to deepen our knowledge about each of these organizations and how they work. And really, these top three bullets all came out of a desire to focus on the impact that each of these grants will have in our community in the four strategic areas. We've had a lot of really in-depth, sometimes hard conversations about how can we know these dollars are being invested in the best possible way in getting us towards the goals that our county has and that you've set, and really have the impact that we want to have. And the last bullet is related to equity, and this is racial equity, and we've had several conversations in our group during and in the postmortem time when thinking about how we can move towards structures. And we intentionally didn't use words like lens or framework here, because we want to talk about structures that support equity. We know that the Commissioners have recently passed a reparations resolution, and we hope that that will be, provide us with more information that may support us in how we move forward in thinking through what this will look like. But we've already started the conversations, and our focus is going to be on structures.
Am I staying? I'm not staying.
I'm going to switch out.[1153.83][1153.83](Laughter).
One consistent topic of conversation we had was providing funding to nonprofit groups that applied for this grant program for operational funds and project funds. And we don't envy you the years you've done this. This is very hard, to figure out how to help the community through these nonprofits with this grant program, but to make sure that the money is going to a successful endeavor. And I think that because we spent so much time kicking it back and forth in our meetings, we'd like to ask for some guidance as to, should we portion off an amount for operational and an amount for projects that have an end date? We did find that there are some really important organizations that provide a lot of services that ended up reaching out to the grant program and applying because they had secured county funds in years past in other ways that they didn't see as an option anymore. And we want to see, you know, how much of the grant proceeds should be structured toward specific projects, and how much leeway we have to continue to fund operations that, without this funding, wouldn't be able to provide some very important impactful services to our community. We also spent some time talking about the three-year idea of funding three consecutive years and then not funding after that for a fourth year. And we're wondering if you can provide us with a little bit more guidance on how strict we should be with that. Is it a hard and fast rule, or if we're seeing a project that has a four-year timeline rather than a three-year timeline, can we, using our judgment, go ahead and fund it for an additional year? We would like to stick with your vision of what this should be. So those were just some points where we had a lot of discussion, and we haven't arrived at answers. So if you have guidance to give us, we'd just love that.
We also had conversations about how this money fits in with other county or governmental funds. There was a question in the application about other county funding that the organization received, but I think we'd love to continue to learn more about your vision for what that means and how we should be considering it. And then lastly here on our considerations, we've talked a lot about sustaining and even increasing. I think we're big believers in what this grant program can do, but we also had really already very interesting and creative conversations about ways there could be to leverage these funds through multiple sources, through partnerships, that the county government might be able to support. And I appreciated Paul already bringing up, you know, these organizations are braiding together lots of funding, and there may be ways, you know, we brought up that idea of technical assistance and support, you know, our membership isn't able to provide that, but there are organizations in our county that do, and there may be partnerships that could come together to really support these organizations to move towards those impacts that are so important to our county. Okay. So quickly, next steps, this is where we're headed from here. I think I'll be the fourth person to tell you that the county staff really blew us away. I knew all four of us would say it, because all four of us were really, really impressed. Everyone on the committee was. And so staff are doing what they do so well, they're off and running, and then you can see that we've already set up a schedule. We're going to meet frequently and really dig into the rest of the work that we have in front of us, and we're already getting started with that. And then the last slide that we'll leave up for you as we finish is where you can find all this information. It's all posted, and you'll see from last year the dashboards that will provide for these new grantees even more information as they go along. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
So when are you looking for, I mean, I wrote some notes down, I can go through them very quickly. When are you looking for guidance, and you want some suggestions now? How do y'all want to do that?
I think we'd be happy to take suggestions if you have them and you have time to give them. I'd ask Rachel when our next meeting is. Do you know the date of our September?
First Thursdays.
First Thursdays are our meeting, so anything that we could get in advance of our September meeting would also be much appreciated.
So I'll just give you some things very quickly, and I'm not speaking for the whole board. The board's probably, you know, I would say, okay with most of these things, just thoughts, you know, high-level thoughts. I mean, you've got four focus areas, and so that should give you direction as a group. And, you know, and so if you can, my thoughts, if you can stay within those, you can concentrate within those, and if you, you know, you're able to meet those needs, that's, you know, great. You're already using county resources, I just encourage you to do that. You know, now, you don't have to reach out and reinvent anything, you know, because the county's got sources that you can provide input to, and then they can come back and make a big difference in helping you. I would say be very, you know, just, and you've already run into this, it's very hard not to personalize these, you know, especially when you're telling people no, you know, and they're all good things. So when you come back to the three-year rule that's in there, it's a rule, you know, and so what I've found over, you know, I've been here for eight years, and what I've found is that if someone provides a service for as long as three years, then maybe we should look at that being part of what we do as a contract. That should just be pulled into our regular services possibly, you know, and then we can make that decision here. I would encourage you just to make sure that as you look at equity and inclusion, that you look at the poverty areas throughout the entire county, and that you make sure that you're providing good geographic support, that we're reaching all these different touch points out in the county. A vibrant economy is just as important in Broad River as it is in Candler and as it is in, you know, South Asheville. So just, if you would do that. The other thing, I do have one that I would love to hear a report sometime on community centers, on where they fit within this. Rachel, the community centers, because those have been sources of funding in the past. I know that the Beaver Dam Community Center, just for record, it's out in, kind of way out in Candler. The contact person is Mary. They missed a cycle, and they were interested in receiving some assistance for something that would help the community, so you might circle back on that one, do some research on it. And so that's my checkmarks. Thank y'all for coming.
Thank you.
Just like to take a moment to thank you all so much, and to thank Commissioner Edwards and staff, of course, who've spearheaded this. It's been a remarkably different process than in the other years I've had the opportunity to serve, and just know how much of a heavy lift it is and how hard those decisions are, and appreciate the absolute intention that's very clear in this. And I'm glad, it sounds like y'all had some fun along the way and really got to know each other, and that's one of the great gifts of this kind of service and leadership, too. So thank you all, really, for all the ways you've shown up to this work, and it's really, really exciting to see the highlights, but also the recommendations, which are obviously really thoughtful, kind of roadmap of what we need to look at next. So just want you to hear that gratitude.
Thank you.
I also want to echo that, because I opened that giant can of worms that got us headed down this path. So thank you to each of you for serving on this, and it's been really fun to hear the camaraderie that you all established with each other, and how you really came together in a really strange time to look at these applications and to make really, really solid decisions in how you move forward. I do look forward to regular updates on how the grantees are doing, how they're performing, particularly because these are difficult times. And we know that a lot of times, those goals may not necessarily be easy to achieve. Maybe when you can't have face-to-face Read to Succeed instruction and that kind of thing, so definitely be curious to hear how that's going and how they're adapting to our reality that we're in right now. One of the things that really struck with me as a professional fundraiser is there's always the ongoing debate of wanting to fund programs but not operations, and I'm really pleased to hear you bringing that up and how that really merges together, because you have to have operations and staff to make those programs happen, and those are not always fun things to talk about, keeping the lights on, keeping the staff paid, so that those really good works can occur in our community. So I'm excited to have that conversation and see where y'all are going and thinking in those terms. But again, thank you so much for digging into this and learning so much more about our community and making really solid recommendations to us. Thanks, y'all.
I would like to add to that, and thank you and the rest of the committee for a job well done, because some of us coming into this early on, when the Commissioners were making the decision... were making the decisions, we all figured out early on that this is something that we should have more input from the community. And you proved us right. Thank you. And I agree with, uh, uh, what Commissioner, what Amanda just said as far as, you know, it's always a tug of war between operational expenses and the projects. And I can tell you that from being on the boards of a lot of nonprofits in the community. But I'm glad that you're digging down and looking at that because that's something we do need to be aware and handle. But again, thank you for a job well done. You guys have come together much quicker than I thought, you know. You keep up the good work and any support you need from us, we'll give it to you. Thanks. And of course, you've got the staff to work with. They make life so much easier. Thanks.
Thank you.
So I have, I have one question. So in terms of groups that used to access other county funding that may have lost those funds and are coming to strategic partnership of, uh, as a potential source of funding, did you find that, um, some of those groups, um, couldn't really be considered because the work they do doesn't fall within one of the categories or just simply that the finite amount of funding that you have meant that, you know, just realistically, a lot of them are not going to get funded?
I think we definitely found that all of the applicants fit very meaningfully into all four categories. That was a particularly wonderful part of, of doing the work is that the, um, the applications were all incredibly powerful and relevant to the four, um, strategic partnership areas. I, I don't, I don't remember a single one that seemed like it wasn't, um, well matched to one of the four areas. It was a struggle for sure to figure out how to make awards without all the, we wished we had $3 million to give out. But I think one of the big challenges that we had when it comes to this idea of programs or organizations that had received funding previously from the county in another way and then were coming here is that they were, um, they wanted to continue the good work and programming that they've been doing. And they were not, we weren't so much seeing that they were, um, starting a three-year endeavor. They are continuing to do vital programming that they've done for a very long time and want to continue to do. And we don't see a path, or we, we couldn't see a path where three years from now, they'd say, and now, now we've completed this three-year project, um, and here's the impact that it's had and, and we'll move on. And we worry, we've talked some about a fiscal cliff that some of these organizations could find themselves on if we do fund them for two more years because what they're, they're not describing to us a time-limited project that they're asking for three years of funding for. That wasn't evident in the applications. Does that make sense?
I think, I think so. Let me maybe just ask a follow-up question to make sure. So in terms of the funding for the organizations that are funded here, um, they, they did all, are you saying they did meet, uh, kind of an approach or define an approach where this is a kind of, here's what we're going to do within three years, meet certain goals, understanding we're not going to get additional funding after that, at least not for this. So they all did fit within that frame as opposed to, you know, here's this need in the community and it's, it was here 10 years ago and it'll be here 10 years from now.
I see what you mean.
Realistically, and we need to meet it because we don't meet it, it's, uh, you know, it's going to be a problem. So, so.
I see, I see what you're asking Commissioner Newman.
Did you, did you, did all the projects fit within the frame I described and then projects that met that were addressing more of an open-ended, long-term need were not considered with these funds?
I realize I answered a different question now. I'm going to speak for myself and not for my fellow committee members. Um, no, I don't, I don't think there was, um, I think that there were many high-quality applications that did not define a three-year endeavor. They defined a need that was, all of them very skillfully defined needs that they were going to address and did an excellent job. And there, there may be some that were defining a time-limited project. I can't think of any at this time, um, but there were absolutely several that, and this is, I think this is why this came up for us as such an important consideration, is that we, we are curious about what it will be like to think about some of the folks who've just gotten funded and communicating with them about the time-limited nature of the funding that's coming their way because it didn't seem that they had a firm grasp on that in their applications.
Okay. So, um, so groups did get funding even if the, um, or could, you know, were considered and many did receive funding even if they're addressing, uh, you know, needs or, uh, undertaking work that's, that from their perspective at least, will probably need to be here, you know, long-term. So, um, but there, but, but we're communicating to them that from terms of this pool of funding, your expectation should be, it's going to be up to three years and not after that. That's kind of the expectations, those are the expectations that are being set.
We, we as a committee had that expectation explained to us. I will not speak to how that expectation was explained to applicants. I don't feel as confident in, in knowing how to explain that. And I don't know, Rachel, if you want to.
So I think one, one thing just, just to remember that the needs, I mean, the need's going to be there and it's going to be greater than the amount of money you got.
Right, yeah.
It's just, you know, it's part of this, part of what, what you do. But by letting someone know that there, that you have that three years, what you're, what you're doing is helping them in, in their outreach for funds where, where they know, okay, I've applied for this here, I'm going to get it this year, I'm excited about, hopefully I'll get it next year, the most I'm going to get is three, so I'm going to search out these other sources. So you're helping to grow them as a, uh, as a nonprofit, you're helping to grow them in, in their outreach and, and source for, for money. So, I mean, that's one of the, I mean, to me, that's one of the reasons why it's there. And it is helpful. It's not just limiting. It is helpful when you tell them that and then they say, okay, well, I'm going to reach out here. You just, it'd be good just to have resources that can help them find other sources also.
And I, I appreciate you explaining that in that way. And this is exactly why we were asking, Kate's ask was very clear for guidance, um, because we've, we've discussed some ideas about levers we might have for the structure of the grant program so that we could increase technical assistance to grantees so that they're, um, at the end of three-year projects, maybe they're coming out with the strongest possible evaluations of what they're doing that they can use to leverage for funds in other areas. As, um, as someone with professional experience in the workings of nonprofits, lots of funding sources come with, um, limits or, and ask, and questions about sustainability and how are you going to sustain this beyond the life of the grant? And, um, it's, it's a hard answer to come by. It's, it's a hard answer to come by. And what we want to make sure we're doing is setting these organizations up for success in any way that we possibly can.
So, so I, I think this, I think this part is, is a topic that does warrant continued conversation because I, I do believe, you know, that there are some needs in the community that are just long-term, right? And for us to say, we're going to work on it for three years and then stop just seems like, well, why is year four less important, you know? And we, and they're, you know, I mean, community centers, are we going to stop funding community centers in four years? I doubt it. We're going to stop funding, you know, we don't stop funding the Economic Development Coalition after three years. I mean, so, so I think we should, we should put more thought into some of these categories that feel more like a, a long-term, realistically, a long-term need that the county will need to be a partner on. And maybe, um, maybe we do pull some of those out at some point. We have some different ways of funding them or some different, you know, maybe we, we don't set that same expectation, whereas in other places, I agree, it can actually be really beneficial. So I think, I think that's a, the topic we should all think more about and I appreciate y'all, y'all bringing that and other issues to us today. Um, any other questions or comments for now? Uh, this will be an ongoing conversation for sure. Yeah? All right. Rachel, thank you to all, everyone on your team and thank you to all the residents who worked on this. Great, great job. All right. Um, next up is, um, the 2020 Solar Financing and Mason Scott's going to present this item.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Thank you for a little bit of time. So on July 21st, you recall that you heard from Jeremiah Leroy and Don Warren about, um, the bond, the bid process and.
Hold on a little closer to the microphone.
So on, is this better? Max, thank you. Um, on July 21st, you heard from Jeremiah Leroy and Don Warren regarding the bid process and contracting for a major solar, um, installation project for the county. When you all voted to approve that contract, you also directed staff to look into funding options for that project. So I'm here today to give you a, a very quick status update on the financing discussion there. Um, we did issue a RFP to about 50 banks, um, in mid-July for a direct bank financing relationship. Those responses are due today, so we haven't actually looked at any specific numbers yet. So the most immediate next steps for you all, on your, um, September 1st, uh, regular meeting agenda, we have planned a public hearing for this financing. Um, Don will also be back in front of you to give you a preliminary analysis of responses to our RFP and a staff recommendation. He'll be asking for authorization to move forward with negotiating with that selected bank, also to, um, submit our application to the local government commission for consideration for financing. This is a reminder of the project values by agency that are going to be funded as a part of this financing. Um, you'll see that that 10.5 million not to exceed amount at the top of the slide is a little, um, higher than the contract you saw. That just includes issuance cost on top of the contract. So again, next steps, um, we have a public hearing scheduled on the September 15th regular meeting. Don will be in front of you to ask for final authorization to proceed with the financing. Staff have a call scheduled with the local government commission, um, commission in early October, um, to seek their approval for this financing. And then we expect close of the financing by mid-October. So very quick, do you all have any questions for me?
I don't think so.
Thank you all.
All right. Next up, the county commission meeting schedule and Michael Frews is going to talk to us about the item.
Grabbing my phone off.
Okay, sorry. Uh, Michael Frews is going to talk to us about the meeting schedule.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Um, if you can pull that slide up, Max, please. Nothing.
It's easy to work it on.
Okay, well, it's, it's easy. So there's a number of statutes we have. So we're looking at the December calendar. If you can go ahead to the next one, please. We have, there's several statutes and I know, I recall it, Commissioner Belcher hit upon it the last time we do, every odd and even year, we're going to have our first regular meeting in December on Tuesday or Monday. We have several statutes at play that are keyed on what happens the first Monday of December. So the first one is the oath. As you all know, in even numbered years, after the general election, everyone who is officer who is elected is required to take an oath. And that, that says that the, uh, the, those people shall assemble, uh, on the first Monday in December in the regular meeting place. That next statute, selection of the vice chair, 153839, also says the first Monday in December, if the chairman was not elected by the people but was picked by the board, then that would happen that first Monday in December. In our situation is the vice chair first Monday in December. 587220, annual examination of bonds. So we have a number of positions, officials, tax collector, finance, registered deeds, sheriff. So it's not just elected officials that would have to have bonds there. Those are those positions as well as a blanket bond and that would cover me, all the assistant finance people, all the people that work in tax, anybody that touches a hundred dollars or more on a regular basis, come under a blanket bond and leads us to regular meetings. So the regular meeting schedule, if the board did not pass a resolution setting every, the first and third Tuesday of every month as the regular meeting schedule, then by statute, those meetings would be on the first Monday of every month in the courthouse. So just sort of thinking ahead, we have this need for a meeting first Monday in December of this year, in particular being a general election. Why don't we just always alter the regular meeting schedule to be the first Monday in December will be a regular meeting? That just might make that wrangling a little bit easier and that would just require a new resolution, just setting that date. Or the board could call a special meeting for the first Monday and just cancel the regular meeting for the first Tuesday, which is December 1st. This year, December 1st is a Tuesday and the Monday is the 7th. So just want to put that on there and just, uh, get some direction. Um, I think it seemed like a good idea or not. So if, if so, we can just set a resolution for your calendar. We also need to clean up, uh, the annual examination of bonds. I mean, it was in the budget, just did not get on the, uh, agenda in December of this year. I just propose to put on the regular meeting agenda next time or on the consent agenda just to approve what's already been done in terms of bonding of officials for this fiscal year.
All right. Thank you, Michael. Um, so I kind of like the idea of why don't we just permanently move it to the first Monday and cancel the first Tuesday? So, and that'll just be the, the way we do it from here on out until someone says differently? Does anybody have any concerns about that approach?
Is there any downside to that? I mean, I can't think of any.
I can't think of it either. It's just a matter of, of, uh, passing a resolution. It requires a resolution, otherwise you default to the first Monday of every month. But just pass a resolution, here's the regular meeting schedule. Uh, the clerk would post it at the courthouse, get a stamp by the clerk's office that was posted on the bulletin board and put a summary of it in the newspaper and you're good to go.
And so we'll do that every year, not just the even years?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
That's the idea.
Sounds good. Let's, uh.
I do have a question though. So the first Monday is the 7th, but then we'd go back to the second Tuesday would be the 15th. So would we, that means we'd be meeting the 7th and then one week later on the 15th, right?
It's been common practice to only have one meeting in December.
One, okay, only have one in December.
And I think the board has always just left two on that, just in case something comes up, but regularly it's just canceled.
Well, but it would be, but we would have to cancel it. So, so it'll be there on the calendar unless we cancel it.
You don't need to put it on the calendar. There's always the option to call a special meeting. That just requires 48 hours notice and posting.
So currently it's on the calendar, but it's routinely canceled.
By default, it's on the calendar because it says first and third Tuesdays of every month.
Okay.
Yeah, I think.
I'm fine keeping it that way.
Do you want to just pull that second one?
I, I'm not hearing anybody say, do it differently. So I think we just keep it on the calendar and we'll cancel if it looks like we don't need it.
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, that's what.
All right. Um, sounds good. So I don't hear any concerns about this. If you want to put this on the consent agenda, that'd be fine.
Okay.
Before we close out the topic, I wondered if, um, either now or at another time, we could look at the meeting that's currently scheduled on Election Day, Tuesday, November 3rd and.
Oh, yeah. We should definitely get rid of that. I mean, that's crazy, right? I mean.
It happens every two years too. We have the same conversation. So it, might there be a way to address, um?
I'll address that as well. I think that'd be pretty, pretty easy fix.
And so, and so, but, you know, one solution is to cancel it. Another solution would be to do something, like maybe we move that to Monday. Um, what are people's thoughts on it while we're, while it's here?
Cancel it. I'd say cancel it. It just means you got a big meeting that month, I guess, but.
So typically with Thanksgiving in that month, it'd be hard sometimes to have a second meeting. So I would recommend that we can go to next week and cancel it completely, but we can work through the calendar and get that on as well when we come back with the December.
So you're saying have one meeting with the second Tuesday?
Correct. That would be the recommendation now instead of canceling that one, just move it for the next week.
Okay.
Yeah, I think move it to the next. As long as it's af, as long as it's after the election, you don't have an issue if it's after the election.
That put, just thinking out loud, some years that would put us with one meeting in November and one in December. And we could add more if needed, of course.
Yeah, we.
Correct. And we can actually look at the calendar now when we come back because I don't know exactly what week Thanksgiving would fall, but let us take a look at November and come back to you.
Okay. All right. Um, sounds good. Well, thanks, Michael.
Yes, sir.
For talking further. All right. Next up is going to be a discussion about public comment. This is kind of a follow-up on our, we've been talking about this the last couple of meetings. Uh, Lamar Joiner is going to get us started on this.
Good afternoon. I think at our previous meeting, we had a discussion, uh, the board had a discussion about, um, looking at some different public comment options. Um, I worked with, um, staff, IT staff, um, legal staff, um, and a couple other individuals to kind of get some options for this. And we did come up with some options. Um, I think, Max, can I get you to, um, I think, Max, can I get you to advance to the next slide, please? So some of our options that we had were live call-in via the Zoom webinar, recorded videos, in-person, that being socially distanced in the chamber, possibly using a kiosk with the Zoom webinar on the first floor, some type of video that could be a feed back up to the video appear in the chambers, email, which we're currently doing, as, as well as recorded voicemail. We will have recorded voicemail later on today. We got Max to help us with that. Or we could have 100% remote meetings, is kind of what the city does. I think with the remote meetings, I think there is policy within the commission policy that I think for individuals have to be in chambers, and I think the board decided not, so that would have to be addressed if we were to go that route.
You're saying that's a county policy?
I, I think within...
The city's 100% remote, right?
Right. Yeah, and I think we would have to address that, that part of board policy as far as having a quorum within the chambers in order to have a regular meeting if we were to go that route. Just wanted to throw that caveat in there. So, Max, could you advance to the next slide? So staff recommendation, what we came up with, with, will kind of be a balance between having live people within the chambers is to have a live call-in. That would require some, some work from staff prior to the actual time for the public comment. They would, individuals would have to sign up and have that information to us by a certain amount of time so we could send out information to them in order to be available. So it, for, for the citizens that were a part of this, they would have to sign up as well as be available during the time of the meeting. So it's kind of two different things that they would be responsible for. And part of that would be a call-in video, is something that could possibly be done. It'd be a little bit more difficult. So I think, for the most part, we could kind of have that process be easier with the call-in number, the live call-in, and we would have to do, it would be easier for us to decide now if we're going to take public comments on new items after or before they're voted on, or take public comments at the end of the meeting. That would actually allow Max to put people in queues, and he would need to know ahead of time if we were going to do it a certain way. So I think making that decision ahead of time, we're going to do all pu, well, this is besides a public hearing. We would obviously have public hearing comments during public hearing, but doing new business items, we would try to have those either be do, be done at the end of the meeting, like they currently are written, and not necessarily have the board right before that item is taken up to say we're going to have public comments on that, if that makes sense. Does that make sense in that situation? It, it's just with technology and what Max is going to have to do in order to provide this service, it would make more sense to already have that established on how we're going to do the public comments at the end of the meeting versus at, during new business items.
Okay. Can I ask, I want to ask a question just to make sure I'm kind of visualizing this correctly. So, so let's just say for the moment, we're taking the public comment at the end of the meeting, so, and, and folks will be calling in via Zoom, not a conference line, right? So where, how will we see them, and will they see us, or who's, who's, how will it, how will it work in terms of interactive?
With the live call-in, there would not, well, the option that we're recommending, there was also another option, but the option that we're recommending is no video.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so, so, so is there a reason to do Zoom then as opposed to a conference line? Because it'll basically be like a conference line almost, right? So any reason why one or the other, or?
Yeah, I'll, I'll get...
Yeah.
I'll ask Max to kind...
I can pitch in just a little bit. I know that with the Zoom, you, you set up with a producer, and the producer can mute, so you may not have that same functionality with a call-in number.
Okay.
And just as a point, I mean, this is interesting because this is the same type of thing that state departments are doing for public comment periods for administrative code changes. They're having a registration deadline the day before and have a call-in. They have a different platform from Zoom, but it's a similar structure. So they're not even following the option of remote-only meetings, which the statute makes bulletproof. They're doing the hybrid of their own.
Okay. So I would just chime in, I mean, I think this sounds, I think it sounds good. You know, the one thing that I feel, I guess, sort of most strongly that we should try to accommodate public comment on, in addition to the public comment period at the end, is any public hearings, because, you know, there's, there's, you know, we're really supposed to do that, and I know we've been living through extraordinary times, but if there's, I think we should definitely try to make it work for public hearings. And then I'm open to talking about other parts of it, too, but just wanted to share that.
The public hearing part would be addressed. It's, I think at times the board has decided on a new business item, right before the item is brought up, that we will take public comments before the item is voted on in new business and not at the end of new business. I think that's the concern. We would have, we would know the public hearing is coming up, so he would have time for that already. It's just when a new business item is on the agenda, we, it would be very difficult, if not impossible, I really want to speak for Max, but I think in him expressing that in order to decide at that moment that we were going to take public comments on a new business item.
Yeah, it's hard to do it on the fly, is what you're seeing, so...
And I, I'm happy to speak for Max. The other piece of having the public comment at the beginning versus the end, because the callers would have to call in and be in a queue like in a conference line, but with the Zoom feature, we would know which number is associated with which caller because they would have been pre-registered. Having the public comment at the end of the meeting does present some difficulties because we don't know what time that is going to be. So we can advise people who are requesting to speak during public comment, the time that they need to make sure that they're on the line versus if they were at the beginning of the meeting, we would be able to tell them that they need to have called in by this time in order for their public comment to be heard during the live call-in portion.
Okay.
So why not move it?
I'm, I'm good moving it. Anybody, I mean, at least for now. If we go back to, once we get back to, you know, people being here, I'm, I'm happy to go back to the way we have it before, for the time being, that does make sense to me.
Because I mean, you know, there, I think, the reason we moved it from the beginning to the end is because everybody was here and, and, you know, we didn't want someone to, I don't know if it was a reason, we didn't want somebody coming in and making her comment and then leaving her, I can't remember why we did it. We've, we've had it.
On back and forth.
We have gone back and forth on that.
I, I personally like having it at the beginning myself, but I think I was losing into that. I think part of it's just we got all our staff here, you know, we're just spending, spending a lot of time.
So you have some options as well, if you want to set a time and not have it at the beginning, if you want to say that we'll take call-ins at 6:30 or 6 o'clock or whatever that time is.
Oh, okay.
Then we can have them queued up. If not, you can start at the beginning, or you can have a specific time for call-ins. The other issue that Lamar was raising is sometimes when we have people in the audience, we sometimes would have people make a comment after every item, just before you take it up to vote. If that is what we want to do with this column, we need to set that standard now so that we can have people queue to speak. Like, for instance, tonight, if we were going to speak on this item, we would have already publicized that so we can have people in queue for that item and not just for general comment. So we're asking for some guidance on, are you going to open up each item for public comment as you did in the past, or you just want to leave it to a general comment?
I would, I would suggest that we have it at the beginning, and in that way, a person can comment on any item on the agenda. If there's something on there, or even if there's a couple things on the agenda that they want to comment on, they can, they can speak to them. You know, the, the reality is, when we've had people come in, we do take comments on a lot of specific, you know, especially if it's some, you know, really weighty issue, we typically are going to take public comment on it. But, but of late, that's not really been possible, so I, I kind of like doing it at the beginning, and that way, any resident can talk to us about one or multiple issues that are on the agenda, or even something that's not on the agenda, but they get their, you know, they get their three minutes, and then, you know, that's it for, for their comment.
So another thought, since you said what you did, and I'm not stuck on these times, but why couldn't you have public, you know, since we're going to do it by call-in, why can't you have a call-in at 5:00 and a call-in at 6:30? I mean, for those that are working later or, I mean, we're never out here before 6:30. But maybe more than one time for a public comment? Because that wasn't, one of the issues about it being at the beginning was simply there was nobody off and they couldn't get here to do it, or, I mean, I mean, I've slept since then, so I can't remember what all the reasons were, but...
I think, I think if we did it at the beginning, that would actually maximize the number of people who do it, because people don't have to wait through our whole meeting until 10 o'clock at night to do it. So I think we'd actually have more people do it. And, but I think that was part of the concern, is just that it takes so long to kind of then get into the agenda items if we do all the public comment at the beginning. That's kind of what I remember people having the biggest concern about, is just it takes a long time to get to your, get started on the agenda. Other thoughts? Mr. Pressley?
I like what Avril said, is if we could go through our consent agenda and then go through if someone's here, we're presenting something, they can go ahead and leave and put it like 5:30, 5:45, and take up to 30 minutes of public comment, and then say we'll start back at 7 o'clock if needed, or 6:30, or... I'd like to go ahead and get the consent agenda and some business out of the way before the public comment, if possible.
Well, that's not bad.
Okay. Other, any other thoughts?
I like the idea of it being up front, and then for instance, just all of it up front.
Okay.
Actually, and what Robert's suggestion, too, is up, is up front, but it's before we get into the bulk of the meeting. Is that what you're saying?
That we would do the consent agenda, do presentations.
Yeah.
So, so handle that stuff, but before we start voting on a bunch of more substantive issues.
I totally hear that. I think the, the one issue that has gotten flagged for us by community members in the past is that doesn't allow opportunity to comment on the consent, any consent agenda items. So that, for me, that's why I would land and just do it up top, but...
Yeah, we get.
It's...
Yeah.
Is there a way to say, okay, I, I want to comment on the consent agenda item? Like we, you know, because what you do if someone is here, you'd say, does anybody have any questions on? So is there any way to set it up, say, okay, if you want to comment on consent agenda item, you got to call at this time, you don't call in later, so we set it up that time. It's going to maybe do something more for, for staff, but I really like the public comment at the end, because that allows the public to hear what we have decided throughout the meeting and then comment on that. To comment before you have your meeting, they're really just general conversations. And so I just think it would be best we do it at the end, but I don't, I don't know if staff could do, have something where people call in and say, I will, I want to comment on the consent agenda item, I have a question, let them do that, then we shut it off, we have our meeting, then they comment at the end. And if, and here, here's the thing, if, if we set a time at 7:00 and we finish the meeting at 6:30, then as Commissioners, we wait 30 minutes till 7:00.
I mean, I'm hearing it would be really hard to do it spontaneously, so I, I think, I think if we want to be sure to include the consent agenda, we should just do it before the consent agenda. I mean, the reality is, we get very few questions on consent agenda, and there are other ways to contact us, too. I mean, we could just say to the public, look, please, if, if you're really, really that civically engaged, please look at it and email us or call us. There are, there are other ways to reach us if you have a question besides that. So I guess I, I would kind of lean towards maybe do it after consent agenda, but then have another, have another public comment period later in the meeting, and doing it at the end would be, I'd be open to that. I do think we'd have to put some, some time limits on these, and I think if you, and I would also say if you comment at the earlier one, you don't comment at the end, because I think there's going to be a lot of interest in this. I think we're going to, if we say we're going to take an hour, my hunch is that we will use an hour. So I think in order to allow as many people as possible to talk to us, we, if you use the earlier period, you don't, you don't comment again on the second period, would be my...
So I'm looking, I'm looking at tonight's meeting, so if, if we did, if, if we, if we did it after presentations, which is what Robert's saying, I think, after presentations or, or after consent? Because present, we do presentations and then we get into public hearing, but how do you know what time that is?
Yeah, I mean, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not kind of like philosophically against the idea of doing it after presentations at 5:30. The reality of kind of timing this means, you know, sometimes we might get done before 5:30 and we're just kind of sitting here for a while, which is sort of an argument for just do it at the beginning, get it done, and then you're not, we don't have any downtime in terms of the flow of the meeting. Because there are going to be times where we do consent agenda, do the pledge, and I could see it's being done before 5:30.
I think you're just going to have to set a time and do it.
Yeah.
Whatever time that is.
Let me ask this, are we in agreement that, that we're thinking about two periods, one at the beginning, and then one later in the meeting towards the end? Does anybody disagree with that concept in that, that each of these will be 30 minutes? So it will take up to an hour?
I'm okay with that, if we can do it.
And each time, it will be 30 minutes each time?
30 minutes each time.
Yeah.
I'm okay with that.
Because you're going to want up front, Anthony, Commissioner Pendleton, you're going to want people to be able to give you input verbally on things that we're getting ready to consider because it, it might affect our vote. And then at the end, you're going to have general comment, pretty much, hopefully, I hope.
Do we, if someone registers for the 5 o'clock or 5:30 spot and we run out of time, do we roll them over so they get to talk at the end? And they would kind of become the first in the queue in the later time? Or is it just sort of bad luck and we start with whoever signed up first for the end of the meeting? There's several process issues to kind of think through on this, I think.
Mr. I'd like to ask a question, sir.
Yeah.
Why, if, if, if we were open to the public, would we put a time limit on public comment?
We have in the past.
You have in the past?
Depends on, it depends on what it is. If, if we know everybody's going to be, you know...
Has that time limit been less than an hour? I'm just trying to figure out why we picked it.
I think it's been an hour, it's been the time.
It's not been less than an hour.
So, all right.
And we don't always do that.
Been a meeting here where you've had public comment and you've went into the night, but now it seems like we're going to put an hour on it, and I'm like, with the chairman, if, if I call the first queue and I don't get to speak, then I don't get to speak, and because we've put an hour limit, we've put a 30-minute limit. I mean, I just...
Well, we're doing that now, we're just reading them, which is not working.
Let's, let's hear from Michael.
I just went over and asked Max just a couple clarifications, this might fill in a couple of your gaps, but yes, the board is always allowed by statute to set reasonable limitations for public comment in this limited form. As to registration for two times, Max was saying that they would be able to come in and register for public comment, general public comment at the beginning, and they could register for general public comment at the end. Now, as with general, as with public comment for a public hearing, they would have to register for that, like tonight, we have two public hearings for zoning matters, and the only caution Max gives is that, you know, they have to be paying attention, they have to know when that's time, so he can signal them it's time to call or call them in. If they're not there, he'll just have to move on to the next person. So that's just a limitation of the, of how the preregistration would work.
But you, but under that scenario, you're saying someone could register to speak at the first public comment and register to speak at the second public comment?
They could unless you put some rule in place against that.
If we said, no, you have to choose one or the other, that would be an option as well?
I think so.
Okay.
I think so.
And in a scenario where, let's say there's a big issue on the agenda, all the slots get used up, could someone leave a voicemail?
I mean, they still email us and voicemail us. That's, that's different than the public comment.
Well, I mean, we've done, we've had a few public comments where the volume has exceeded the hour, so I just want to think that through just in the event that it would happen again.
I mean, what we...
If you don't, if you don't... If you don't, if you, if you miss, if you're the, whatever, thirtieth or per, whatever the number is, how do you deliver public comment if you don't get a slot?
For that meeting?
Yeah.
I think unless we create some other process, the answer is that you didn't get a chance because we used the full, we used, all the time got used and you didn't sign up.
I mean, you can always, you could always tell someone, Commissioner, Jasmine, you could always, we can let people know that, that whatever, whatever their, their comments are. I mean, they can email us, they can leave us a voicemail, and they also have the ability to have their voice recorded for public comment. You know, and right now, those are three ways where you can provide input to the commission. We all, we get our emails, we get our voicemails, and we, you know, go through all those. So those are three ways that they can have their voices heard. And we all use those in combination when we try to make a decision as best we can. So I don't, I don't think they'll fall through the cracks.
I think as long as that's clearly communicated.
Yeah.
Right. So just to be clear, we would not bring in voicemails to you. That would be something to leave just on your calls.
That's right. I'm saying that, that we get those on our computer, voicemails, emails, they're still doing that. We are still distributing those. Lamar is distributing those. We still get those comments. They still have that ability to communicate that way. But if they want to communicate for a public comment, what we're trying to do tonight is decide for those that want to call in and have their voices heard by Zoom, how do we want to do that? And for me, because this is a new decision, if we do that one time, whenever we do it, I'm okay with it. I mean, if we do it up front, you want to do it up front, I'm fine with doing it up front. Because this is different than what we debated about before on public comment. It's totally different. And then they have their voices heard. I don't see splitting it up. I see just do it.
I've been persuaded to that view as well.
Yeah. And, and I think Jasmine, nobody calls in.
The reality is, I think especially, I think most people will sign up for the earlier slot because then they know exactly when to do it.
That's right.
They don't have to be waiting around watching us. And it's earlier in the day, but if we limit that to thirty minutes, my concern is that it will get way more comments than that and a lot of people will end up not getting to, to speak to us. So I'd prefer to just do an hour and do it earlier in the meeting as.
So I'm gonna make a suggestion, Chairman. Why don't we do it, do it for an hour and do it at five fifteen? By five fifteen, we've got our pledge, we've got the, we voted on the consent agenda. You know, if we get in the situation in this kind of meeting, we see that we're coming up, hey, we're going to have to have a hard stop at five because in, you know, we know that we're going to be having public comment in fifteen minutes. We should be able to pull that off in fifteen minutes.
All right.
That's my suggestion.
All right, we don't typically vote in our pre-meetings, but is, I'm in agreement with that idea.
So we just need consensus and then we can.
If it's a consensus, we can just go. If it's not, then we'll need to vote on it some other time. But is that, can everyone, we'll give this a try. I mean, we, I'm open to reconsidering this, but I think it's a good, it's a good idea. So it sounds like, it sounds like we're going to give this a try.
And, and just for the record, we, it was at one of our special meetings the board had in March, but we prepared an amendment to the bylaws COVID related. So just to make sure it's clean and for the record, I would just suggest adding it to the agenda this evening and just.
That's what I was going to say.
Just do it that way.
Okay, okay. So we'll put this on the agenda for tonight. To, and then we'll vote on it just so it's, it's all official. Okay. All right, very good. Thank you all. Appreciate staff thinking about this and their ideas. All right, the next item is an update on COVID nineteen activities and responses. All right, and Stacy Saunders is here to talk to us, and thank you for being here.
Thank you. Good afternoon. So thank you for the opportunity to provide a COVID, a brief COVID update for you. And if you'll advance, can I advance? Great. So the first slide that we have for you is our, essentially our EPI curve or incidence curve, so new cases daily with a seven day average. And you can see early on that, that curve was low and slow, which was expected as we were in a stay-at-home order at that time that was put in place at the end of March. And then saw a slight increase right there in the incubation periods following the phase two implementation, which also coincided with Memorial Day weekend. And then we leveled out for a little bit, and then you see a steady increase as we moved further into the phase two with some extensions at that time too, and another major holiday being July fourth. So this is indicative of people interacting more with each other in general, more movement of people. And then recently in that gray shaded area, which is that, that area of somewhat uncertain because not all of the tests have come back and not all the cases have been reported yet, seen a slight decrease in new cases daily. So we're cautiously optimistic, but very hopeful that we're moving in that downward direction. And as of today, earlier today, when I looked at the dashboard, we have two thousand one hundred and ten confirmed cases with fifty-three COVID-related deaths. This next slide indicates the COVID-like illness that we're experiencing. This graph shows the percent of emergency department visits in North Carolina for COVID-like illness through the week of July twenty-fifth. COVID-like illness is one of our early indicators as these individuals are presenting symptoms that are consistent with COVID. This includes all the emergency department records with, with signs and symptoms that may indicate COVID-like illness, including cough, shortness of breath, respiratory distress, fever, chills, temperature. And these numbers only represent people seeking care in the emergency department. So there is a little bit of overlap in that beginning part of the graph with influenza-like illness. So early on in that graph during flu season. And so Western North Carolina is region six, which on this graph is that right yellow line toward the bottom. And you can see we have lower levels, but a slight uptick toward the end of this time period. And here are our Western North Carolina hospital data points, again, beginning to level out. Fairly stable. And so when we think about community transmission, we look toward the percent positivity to tell us a little bit about spread. And it's one of the ways that we can tell whether the rise in cases is because of that increased spread within our community. So in Buncombe County, about five percent of our COVID tests that are collected come back positive. And we've remained stable around five percent for the last couple of weeks. And the state has ranged between seven to ten percent positivity during the same time period. And the state has most recently had about a seven percent positivity rate in their most recent update. And so I just want to say that that's a slight uptick for us here in Buncombe from about a month ago when it was right around two or three percent. And so saw a slight bump, a little bit more community transmission, more spread, and starting to level out again. So I just want to take a moment to tell you a little bit about our testing sites as that was a topic of discussion that, and just one thing that per the state's dashboard, we are averaging here about six hundred tests per day, quite impressive. There are several testing access points in the county, and there are three community fix sites supported by Buncombe County. And those are Sundays at AB Tech, Tuesdays at the Ingalls in Suwannee, and Thursdays at the Buncombe County Sports Park. We do have a new registrations system that's in place that has reduced the wait time, particularly as folks are waiting in line. That wait time has gone down significantly for folks who are actually at the site and waiting. And the wait time for testing results has been reduced to about twenty-four hours, give or take a little bit. And so we urge those who are interested in testing to complete the system checker online. And if the answers indicate that they should be tested, they will be filling out a registration form. And once that form is completed and submitted, a representative from the ready team will contact them over the phone to schedule an appointment for one of the collection sites. And then they'll show up for their site, for their test. And so we here in Buncombe have done a little over forty-six thousand five hundred completed tests from the beginning. And if you'll now just sort of direct your attention to that right side, just the, sort of those indicators that tell us where are we. So that COVID-like illness has a yellow because we're seeing that slight uptick that I mentioned. The number of lab confirmed cases is at yellow because we've seen an increase and now hovering around thirty or thirty-so new cases per day. Our percent positivity is remaining stable at that five percent, between four and five percent, but that's slightly up than what we were seeing about a month or so ago. And then our hospital capacity is at green, with our testing completed also at green. As I said, averaging about six hundred tests per day within the community. And we restarted those community testing sites on August ninth. And then contact tracing at a yellow as those cases slightly came up. We saw increase in the need for tracing and just making sure that we follow up with people as quickly as possible and have them respond to that phone call. And then lastly, I couldn't be up here with you without saying that it's very important that we stay committed and diligent to the three Ws of wear, wait, and wash. I continually say to folks that we can't do this alone. We need all of you and all of our community to help us in slowing the spread of COVID. I think that's all we have tonight.
All right, thank you very much. Commissioners, are there any questions?
Thank you for the presentation. Just two quick questions. One, very sadly, it seems like there's been a uptick in the number of deaths in the past week. Is there anything notable that we should be thinking about that? Or is it just sort of part of the sad ebbs and flows of this?
That's a great question. So we'll be pulling more data as we do get ready for the community briefing. But I can tell you in the last week, a few of them were related to long-term care facilities. The, the fifty-three COVID-related deaths are our total, and about forty-three of those have been associated with a long-term care facility. So very vulnerable population innately, that they tend to be over sixty-five, usually have some underlying health conditions. And most vulnerable for severe illness and sometimes most high at risk for the worst outcome, which is death.
Great. Thank you for that update. The other one, and maybe Fletcher will be addressing this, was just any updates y'all could share around some of the issues we talked about last week around restaurants and gyms in particular? Thank you.
Good afternoon. I believe you guys saw my kind of email summary of how that went, but just to kind of summarize, what, what prompted that whole response was that the complaints we were seeing from the community all seemed to focus on the restaurant industry. So we presented some, you know, the idea of maybe moving that alcohol curfew to nine. We got response from you guys, we got some response from the community and the restaurants, and we established that task force. That task force from Friday to the following Thursday, we assessed or evaluated thirty restaurants in the community, both within the downtown, greater Asheville and county jurisdictions. Overall, very high level of compliance and thankfully a very eagerness and a willingness from those owners if there was some non-compliance or issues to very quickly make serious effort to come into compliance. The, the main concern we had is that some of these places, particularly ones that are staying open later, as the night goes on, they're not, they weren't keeping people at their tables, they're getting up, they're mingling and becoming more of a bar-type environment, which is exactly what we don't want. But we've addressed that with a couple places where we, we saw instances of that. Other than that, most of the, most of the places where people weren't falling into orders was just simple signage, which a lot of it we remembered on the spot or gave them guidance, and that, that's really easy fix. So again, overall impressions, high level of compliance from the industry. I, I think as we went to some of these restaurants, I heard that, you know, they read the news article that we're establishing that task force and that prompted them, you know, overnight to kind of reevaluate what they're doing, take another look at the guidance and, you know, told us they made some changes. So I think that that presence and using that team as a mechanism to kind of stimulate the community to kind of reassess was very effective.
Now that, I have a quick question.
Yes.
I hung in my glasses. Now that particularly county schools are back in session and there are children reporting to classrooms, how are you working with them to ensure the health and safety of everyone? Particularly since there was a news article today about a teacher testing positive. Unfortunately, I hope they're okay.
So, so for entirety of this, you know, as a rumor, we curtailed last year's school year. On, on a weekly basis, we're engaging with the county and city school systems. We pulled them into a part of our EOC. We set special meetings with them where we're advising them, working through the guidance for schools safely reopening as it comes from both the federal and state levels. I think the biggest thing we've seen this week is a lot of the higher education. I think even, you know, the county school systems have been looking to the UNC system as kind of setting the tone. We know UNC itself went to virtual this week, you know, week one. So we're, we're continuing to advise, we're planning some communications with them. But I would imagine, you know, that those kind of decisions will trickle down through all the school systems as we continue. But the, the incidents we saw in the reporting of the teacher, thankfully, you know, we had, they did a good job and caught that before school started and were able to isolate, quarantine anyone who was associated with that room and that teacher. They have done, you know, we've been advising them on cleaning, proper, proper procedures and proper, the materials they use. So I think they've done a good job and feel confident. I think the biggest strength is with both school systems and also the charter in private schools, we have a really strong partnership with them. We're in constant communication. I think, I think that's really what's going to get us through, working through this semester.
Thank you.
I have one question, and it may be a question to Stacy Saunders. And if the answer is, you know, we just don't know, I totally appreciate that. And just kind of a question about our understanding of the, the science around COVID. So there's a lot of discussion and concern about fall and winter as the traditional flu season, you know, comes back in and how taxing that could be on the healthcare system since you'll have, you know, the, the normal flu, which is pretty taxing on the healthcare system layered on top of this. So my question is, you know, in addition to that dynamic, do, what is the current kind of understanding within the health community and scientific community around whether COVID nineteen itself is highly likely to become much more transmissible? Or I've also read some things that, that there's some sense that it might become, people might get sicker typically than they do during what's been happening in the summer. So I guess I just wanted to ask what, what your sense is for this? Because while the pandemic is still at a very high level, there's, you know, a thousand people dying in our country every day. There are some positive trends and I think kind of the sense of like, maybe, maybe we'll be able to kind of get through this. But what are your thoughts about this fall and what the state of the science is telling us about what, you know, what the different scenarios might be that we're facing?
Well, thank you for the question. It definitely is something that public health professionals and DHHS and local health directors are talking about, certainly as we, as fall approaches. And so I don't know that I have the right answer or a really robust answer for you other than to say that it is under discussion, particularly as we are likely to see COVID and influenza overlap. And our surveillance mechanisms will be, will be showing both of those. And how do we, one, be able to effectively test quickly for both, ruling out others, and then be able to move quickly to isolating and quarantining when we need to? And making sure that folks know that even if it is flu, we still want you to stay home. That it's not a time to be going out just because it's not COVID. We do recognize that there might be a little bit of that mentality of, well, it's not COVID, so I'm okay. But as we approach fall, we want folks to understand that if it's not COVID and you still have COVID-like symptoms or influenza-like symptoms, we want you to be home. And so I hope to have more information for you in the coming weeks as we continue to discuss with DHHS what that's going to look like for rapid types of screenings and if that changes our protocols if, if at all. And I don't have a very good answer and I don't really know necessarily about the science with, if COVID's going to get worse as far as like the.
The effects of weather. The effects of weather on.
Right.
Right. Because there was some hope that maybe it would go down a lot during the summer, which didn't happen. Although, again, you know, this is just kind of reading stuff, right? But, but there does seem to be a lower percentage of people who get seriously ill and die compared to earlier stages of the pandemic. And there's some sense that, well, was that because, you know, in the winter and early spring? That, that weather does have some influence on it in terms of how many, the percentage of people who get really sick and, and who ultimately might die from it. But I realize we're all just still living through this. So is there a scientific understanding of that yet? Or are these still just questions that everyone's looking at?
So I think you're posing questions that everybody's looking at. And from a local health director's perspective, I would say early on, most certainly because our state and our community took proactive actions with restrictions, we saw a lot less interaction with each other. So those populations that we're seeing now having increased illness, so like our 18 to 40-year-olds and those sort of, that, that age group, was less affected early on because of those restrictions that were put in place, those mitigation strategies that were put in place to protect us and to limit our interaction with each other. And early on, in many communities, you saw that, that, that age distribution curve really fall heavily on the older population. And most certainly as local, as long-term care facilities were being effective, affected. And now as we've moved into Phase 2, as Phase 2's been extended, and we're interacting with each other more and more, and our movement in general is more. Particularly, you know, as I mentioned with holidays, you know, folks moving around not just only in the jurisdiction, but other, you know, outside of the jurisdiction, we're interacting more in general with each other. And so we've seen that age distribution across the state change quite a bit. And so I think more of the, of what you were referring to about the older generation, the, the older population and being affected early on and having severe outcomes was probably much more, from my perspective, much more indicative of those stay-at-home orders that were in place that were limiting some of the interactions with, with others. And now we're seeing that distribution level out with our older population and seeing an increase in our, our younger populations who are most certainly interacting with each other. So I think that that is probably at play. And I hope to have more information for you as we approach flu season about what that's gonna look like, not only as, at a local level, but as a state, how we're gonna move forward with that.
Okay. Thank you so much. Any other questions, Commissioners? All right. Thank you, thank you to both of you and everyone on, on your teams for all your great work.
Thank you all.
All right. Commissioners, we're through our agenda. Just a couple of things before we move, before we adjourn. So we're gonna add the public comment process to our agenda tonight. And the one other thing I wanted to ask, I sent an email out about this earlier. I'd like to ask if we move the resolution regarding the casino development up earlier as well? Because the chief of the Eastern Band, the Cherokee, will be here, but he can't stay long. So I just wanted to make sure we take it up at a time where if there are any questions, then maybe there won't be any questions. But if there's no objection, I'd like to ask to move that up. All right. We are done with everything we needed to take care of here. So this meeting is adjourned, and we're gonna reconvene at 5 o'clock for a regular meeting.